Thank you.
What's happening?
You're keeping here.
I just started it.
Oh, at least we want to get some like, brighten it up because it's really fun.
Yeah. I don't have all those skills. Like I can do this.
Was Lincoln sent gift of the haze?
That's what it is.
That's what it was. This is gift of the haze. Wow. So it makes sense to just, so pull the out of Graham. Some space there. Yeah, because it is. That's what I heard from pretty much everybody, but if you actually look at population centers, that's the least utilized.
Yep.
Chief, how are you?
Okay. Hi, chief. Yeah, I didn't know that.
Under replacement. Well, it's, it's, yeah, it's everything, so it's.
Yeah.
It's not that. There was another giggling. There was another giggling. Do you know how? Go to the cross. It's the. It's just a place that might. Okay. Yeah, we're.
Comes to pride club. Time.
Yeah, but I'll be happy to. Right.
Thank you. I'm confused because they said an updated for the bylaws that were already updated in twenty twenty three. I'm going to find out so I don't know if they forgot yet or if there's a new document. But I should. Because he catches what does he know? Something's off. Like if there's some way for this chat was like, I don't know. This is the last one. I've got it. He's got the right part. She raised back and it's like, okay, here's the document. It was going forward, I guess, but if they're just very confused. I don't know.
Uh. That.
Where I can read it. I think they sent them along.
Okay. Over. Yeah. Thanks. Thanks for being the detective. Big thing. Yeah. Yeah. You can turn down.
All right, we will call to order the October sixth meeting of city council. If you're able, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Now pause for a moment of silence. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Bullock.
Here.
Councilmember Evans. President Keppel.
Here.
Councilmember Marks. Councilmember Steiner.
Here.
Councilmember Strebig.
Here.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held September fifteenth, twenty twenty five.
We have to approve without the necessity of a reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor.
Aye.
And that motion passes. Without objection, I'd like to move items five through nine to the top.
Item five, communication from Councilmember Steiner and President Keppel regarding Hispanic Heritage Month.
Councilwoman Steiner? Do you want to?
Dear colleagues, the history of Hispanic Heritage Month is rooted in the labor of Latino activists who fought rights in recognition of their history and culture. Representative Edward Roy Ball, intro- from Los Angeles, introduced legislation that was ultimately signed into law by President Johnson in nineteen sixty eight. This legislation honored a week-long celebration in September. Ultimately, the week-long celebration was expanded under President Reagan in nineteen eighty eight, when it became a month-long celebration. Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to honor, support, reflect, celebrate, uplift, and empower the Hispanic and Latino community. It is a time to educate ourselves and the greater community about the many contributions that Hispanics have made to better society in this country. From labor to the arts and sciences to business and entertainment, Hispanics have made an improved life for us all and have joined with other cultures and ethnicities in solidarity in movements across this country. I encourage all in the community to join us in honoring Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you.
Thank you. I will move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded and discussion. Councilwoman Strebig.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton Steiner and President Keppel for bringing this forward. I'm pleased to support this resolution to respect and recognize Hispanic Heritage Month and Latino, Latina, and Latinx people and their contributions to our community and country. From organizing farm workers in the nineteen sixties to local restaurants here in Lakewood and the recently opened Central Villa twenty five on West Twenty Fifth Street, workers have made our community stronger, more diverse, and richer by sharing their culture, traditions, and concerns. I will continue to support the inclusion of diversity in all aspects of our city. Thank you again for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Other council members? Councilman Hamilton Steiner.
These are beyond scary and imme- immeasurable times for us all in this community, whether you believe or accept this or not. However, it is particularly scary and dangerous for anyone in this country that appears to be illegal, as if legality has particular appearance. Since November, and perhaps in some ways always, those in the Hispanic and Latino community have been living in fear. Attacks on their livelihood, their capacity and dignity to live, and their right to life is being threatened as men and perhaps women come into our communities and detain these individuals without due process, assuming and accusing them of wrongdoing, thwarting the very laws, system of justice, and constitution they profess to be protecting and upholding, all because of appearing to be illegal. In Chicago, this has escalated to coordinating trainings that are taking place. While we pause and take this moment to celebrate, uplift, and honor the Hispanic and Latino community, I know it isn't enough, but in these times, we must find joy where we can, and we must find ways to bring community and show solidarity to any in our community that are being intentionally targeted and attacked. We must stand with those in our community that are hurting and uplift, support, and be their advocates and champions. I know my words are not enough, but I hope that my actions of solidarity and community are more than enough and that we will be able to weather this trepid time in history. We are truly stronger together and more beautiful when we celebrate and honor our rich and cultural differences.
Thank you. Well said. I would like to, we have a comment on the resolution itself that I think would be appropriate to read now. We don't always read the public comment. This one in particular is coming from our anti-racism chair, Laura Rodriguez Carbone. She notes that right now Latino communities face intensified threats, ICE raids that separate families, violence fueled by anti-immigrant sentiment, and dehumanizing public rhetoric. These actions don't happen in a vacuum. They create fear here at home and discourage many from engaging in civic life. This resolution matters more precisely because of that context. It recognizes the long history and growing presence of Hispanic and Latino residents. It honors their contributions in culture, business, public life. It also stands explicitly against policies and rhetoric that target, scapegoat, or harm Latino communities. By passing this, Lakewood can affirm our city rejects fear and exclusion. We commit to protect all residents regardless of background. We encourage respect, safety, and participation. I urge council to vote yes and to follow through with programs and partnerships that will make these commitments real. And I'll just add to echoing Councilwoman Hamilton Steiner's comments that no human is illegal. All right, any other comments from council? I don't believe we have anyone signed in to speak on this item. Did anyone want to speak? We have a lot of folks who probably want to speak on a lot of items. I see that, so, but I just wanted to offer that up in case anyone did want to speak on this item before we move on. Okay. All right. So seeing none, so this is right now just the motion and a second to receive and file the communication part of this. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item six, resolution twenty twenty five forty nine, a resolution to join with states, municipalities, and other jurisdictions around the country to designate September fifteenth through October fifteenth as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Lakewood by celebrating Hispanic culture and paying tribute to the contributions of Hispanic Americans.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Yeah, well, we have, we have a number of ceremonial resolutions that we'll do photos for, so we'll, we'll get through these, the ones that move to the top, and then we'll do all the photos together, so.
Item seven, resolution twenty twenty five fifty, a resolution to honor lifelong Lakewood resident Helen Boland on the occasion of her ninetieth birthday.
It's me. Oh, okay. Councilwoman Strebig.
Thank you. Dear colleagues, I am pleased to recognize and introduce you to Mrs. Helen Boland. A lifelong Lakewood resident, she epitomizes our long Lakewood history of strong female leadership and activism. She raised six children, held down a career as a psychiatric nurse at Lakewood Hospital, was active in civic life and politics, and coached her son's baseball team, even one that may have not been viewed as very ladylike. Without concern for public criticism, she ran for office in the nineteen seventies, and it's not a stretch to imagine that the elected woman in this room have opportunities to serve today because of her activism. Her bravery helped change the conversation and opened doors to more opportunities for women today. Thank you for your service, Helen, and I'm proud to bring forth a resolution honoring your ninetieth birthday.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strebig. I will move to adopt the res- oh. First move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Ms. Boland, did you want to say a few words? You're welcome to if you'd like. You don't have to. Thank you, and thank you for being here tonight. We're honored to have you. Any further discussion? Okay, on the motion to adopt the resolution, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item eight, communication from Council President Keppel regarding sudden unexpected death in epilepsy awareness month.
Dear colleagues, it is with a heavy heart that I offer up the following resolution in honor of a twenty-five-year-old Lakewood resident, Brenna Broussard, who died at the age of twenty-five from sudden unexpected death in epilepsy or Sued Up. According to Brenna's father, who reached out to request this resolution immediately prior to her death, Brenna was thriving in her life and career. Her friends and family were caught completely off guard by her death and feel that having more knowledge about Sued Up may have prevented her death. The purpose of this resolution is to raise awareness and to make sure that anyone living with epilepsy or caring for someone with this condition is empowered with knowledge and information. While much remains unknown about Sued Up, the Epilepsy Foundation recommends a handful of measures that patients and families can take, such as taking their medications regularly and at the right dose, prioritizing sleep, keeping regular doctor visits, avoiding alcohol and recreational drugs, identifying and avoiding seizure triggers, and utilizing seizure detection and alert devices. Please join me in supporting the following resolution to bring attention to Sued Up this October.
I'll first move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and I know we're honored to have Brenna's father, Council President from North Olmsted, Louis Broussard, here. President Broussard, would you like to say a few words? Just the button so it turns green. There you go.
Thank you, President Keppel, and esteemed members of council, Mayor George, members of your administration. Thank you for having me this evening, and, and more importantly, thank you for joining in this cause and effort. It started out as just a, an idea I had at about midnight about a month ago, and I got out of bed, went downstairs, fired up my computer, researched all the council presidents in northeast Ohio and sent off an email blast asking them to, to join us in having October as Sued Up Awareness Month in their respective cities. And that is because two years ago, we were honored to have, in the state of Ohio, they passed a law called Brenna's Law, which designates every October twenty-sixth as Sued Up Awareness Day in Ohio. So I, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about Sued Up and how we came to be in this, this sphere. Despite no history of epilepsy on either my side of the family or my wife's side of the family, two of our kids had. of the family, two of our kids had epilepsy. Not a big deal. Medication, in most cases, medication controls and prevents seizures, so you can live a normal, fulfilling life, and that’s exactly what was happening with Brenna. She started epilepsy just shy of her 16th birthday, and, but she was living a normal life. She, she rarely had any seizures, and it was, you know, kind of an afterthought. And, you know, my son Nick, he actually started epilepsy at age four in 1996. So, beginning in 1996, up until Brenna’s passing, a short distance from here, actually, on Hathaway Avenue on January 30th of 2022. So, that’s 26 years of doctor visits for two kids, probably at least twice a year. So, we had probably at least 50 to 60 doctor visits, and never once were we informed about this thing called SUEDEP, sudden unexpected death in epilepsy. And there are, sadly, there are things that you can do to mitigate the risk of it occurring. So, the first time we heard about it was, we had, in lieu of flowers, we invited people in Brenna’s obituary to make a donation to the Epilepsy Association of Cleveland, and that was just a random Google search. We knew nothing about them. A week after her funeral, they tracked us down, called us, and said, “Hey, there’s been over $30,000 in donations made in your daughter’s memory. We’d really like you to come see our facility here and learn what we’re, we’re all about.” And so, we did, and we’re glad we did. And as soon as we got there, the executive director said Lou Joanie was at SUEDEP, and we just looked at each other. We had no idea what, what she was talking about. So, you know, when it, when they explained it, we were in shock, and then shock kind of turned to anger, and then we just decided to turn our anger and our grief into action. So, ever since that, that day that we met with the Epilepsy Association, we are fierce advocates, our entire family, for bringing awareness to about SUEDEP to every epilepsy patient who is being treated by a doctor. And I’m currently working with State Representative Bride Rose Sweeney and State Senator Tom Patton to introduce a bill, hopefully next week, concurrently in both chambers, that would actually make it a mandate that neurologists and epileptologists who are treating epilepsy patients must inform their patients about SUEDEP so that other families like ours don’t have to go through what we went through. And we, we really believe that your participation—by the way, there’s 140,000 Ohioans living with epilepsy, most of them probably very quietly. Another staggering statistic is one in 26 people will at some point in their lifetime develop epilepsy, so those numbers just continue to grow for whatever reason. So, all the more reason for us to inform about SUEDEP so that the patients can take those handful of, of things that they can do that are, that are within their control and mitigate the risk of it happening. So, again, thank you for participating. You are one of 23 northeast Ohio municipalities who have signed up to, to do a resolution or a mayoral proclamation, so thank you so much. You are helping to save lives.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. Thank you, President Broussard, and again, we’re so sorry for your loss. Any further comment on the communication? Don’t think we have anyone signed in, else to sign and speak. Okay. On the motion to receive and file the communication, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item nine, Resolution 202551, a resolution to join with the Epilepsy Association of Cleveland, other northeast Ohio communities, and the families and friends of those affected by sudden unexplained death and epilepsy SUEDEP, to declare October 2025 as SUEDEP Awareness Month in the city of Lakewood.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion’s been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. So, we’re going to go back to the top, and then our next one is the gender freedom one, and then we’ll be ready for photos, so.
Item one, Report from Committee of the Whole Held September 22nd and September 29th, 2025.
Dear colleagues, the Committee of the Whole met September 22nd, 2025, to discuss two topics. The first topic was Resolution 202545, which would adopt a gender freedom policy for the city of Lakewood in response to ongoing attacks to transgender rights at the state and national levels. We welcomed Dara Akadson, Executive Director for TransOhio, Elizabeth Kotavich, Lead Advocacy Coordinator, LGBT Community Center of Greater Cleveland, and Sean McCann, Policy Strategist, ACLU of Ohio, to provide feedback on the proposed legislation. The legislation was substituted in committee with a revised version that included edits from the Law Department and community partners. A few additional edits were made on the floor in response to the committee discussion. The substituted legislation was referred favorably back to full council for adoption. The second topic on the agenda was a series of three resolutions to appoint community members to openings on the city’s boards and commissions, including Planning Commission, Tree Advisory Board, and the newly established Complete and Active Streets Education and Advisory Board. Council members moved to enter executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment of a public official. The Committee of the Whole met again on September 29th, 2025, to interview six candidates to fill the upcoming vacancy on the Planning Commission. The interviews were held in the East Conference Room and were open to the public. Each interview lasted 15 to 20 minutes, during which time council members asked questions to better understand the qualifications and unique skill set of each candidate. After the interviews were over, council members voted to enter executive session for the purpose of considering the appointment of a public official. I expect that council will act on Resolution 202540 to make an appointment to the Planning Commission at tonight’s general meeting. Council would like to thank all of the applicants for taking time to participate in the interview process and for willing, their willingness to serve the city of Lakewood. And I’ll just add that it was truly remarkable, the quality, impressive quality of candidates that we had. It was, you know, not an easy decision. All right, or will be a not easy decision that we make tonight. All right, I will move to receive and file that report.
Second.
Motion’s been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item two, Substitute Resolution 202545, a resolution to take effect immediately adopting the city of Lakewood gender freedom policy in response to attacks on transgender rights at the state and national levels.
I will first move to adopt. Oh, no, I’m going to move, actually, before I do that, I’m going to move, there is a typo. Click back, remind me where it is. In—there’s a sentence that says attempting to ending that should say, under the third bullet point, attempting to end. So, I’m going to move to, change ending to end.
Second.
Motion’s been made and seconded. Any discussion on that? Minor correction? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. All right. Now, I will move to adopt.
Second.
Motion’s been made and seconded, and I imagine that Councilperson Strebig would like a few words.
Thank you. Thank you, President Keppel, for your leadership on this resolution and policy, and for your continued efforts to safeguard equal rights for all of our neighbors. Colleagues, as we continue to see national and state attacks, dehumanize and erase United States citizens, members of the LGBTQ community, we must act to protect Lakewoodites with every means possible. Deprioritizing police investigations and cooperation, protecting performers and entertainers, keeping private healthcare information secure and available to city employees, even if they have to travel out of state, is critical. While the rich Playboy Club that controls our state and national politics continues their path of destruction, we must stand strong and defend democracy and freedom for all Americans. Your vote in favor of this resolution sends the message to our neighbors that they will not be left behind. We see you, we respect you, we respect your rights, and we will defend those rights. I hope you will all join with me tonight in sending this clear message that provides protections to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Other councilmembers? Okay. And I’ll just say that I was honored to work on this resolution and build on the work that has been done by other cities, also in partnership with, I see a lot of members of the Democratic Socialists of America here tonight. Also, thank you for your support with this and encouragement. It was really a collaborative effort, and it’s making a stronger resolution than we’ve, we’ve seen in the past that is already, I’m getting other municipalities reaching out, looking to replicate this model, so. Works, when we all work together and hear everyone’s voices, it makes for a stronger model, so thank you for everyone who participated in that process. Okay. So, we have a number of folks signed in to speak. When I call your name, you’ll come up to the microphone. It’s already on, so you don’t need to push anything. You will have up to five minutes. You’ll state your name. If you feel comfortable, your address. I understand why some might not. And then, you have up to five minutes. Please avoid personalities, and address the chair. That’s me. All right. So, first up on this is Matt Brown.
Matt Brown, 11830 Lake Avenue. So, I’ll start by saying, I thank everyone in this room, and everyone outside of this room is very well aware that there’s a lot of stuff going on in the world right now, a lot of stuff that touches everyone in very different ways. For me, because I can only speak for myself, one of the things that’s touched me in the last couple of years has been the legislative attacks that I’ve seen on the transgender community. I am very well aware of what happens when a powerful government chooses a vulnerable community to villainize and, and/or oppress. So, when Cleveland Democratic Socialists of America said that they were going to put together some trans sanctuary resolution and try to get Cleveland and Lakewood to pass protections for this community, I was like, “Sign me up.” I, I don’t remember when it was, but I sent, Ms. Keppel, I sent you that resolution language sometime earlier this year, and we’ve been talking a lot, I’ve been coming to these meetings, and we’ve, we are thankful to have you in one of our own meetings. It was really fun and informative. This is, well, as much as all of that has happened and we’ve gotten to this point, I know that there is still a lot of work to be done, not just Lakewood, but there’s a lot of work that needs to be done in all the stuff that’s going on in the world. And I’m really, I’m very appreciative of the work that you, or the support and the work that you’ve done with this resolution, and, yeah, I, I’m happy to see this move forward, and I want to keep moving forward however long it takes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Robyn Zakowski.
Hi, my name’s Robyn Zakowski. My zip code is 44107, and I just want to speak in support of this resolution. We’ve been working really hard to get this done for quite a while now, and I just want to remind everybody that trans people are not our enemies, they are our friends, they are our colleagues, our neighbors, and truly that this resolution has meant a lot for helping support the community. And then also additionally, I think it really does frame who’s the real enemy here, which is people of the state and national legislation trying to demonize our neighbors and our friends, not only just trans people, but people who look different than us, might speak different than us, and might be different, but we are all part of the same working class, and moving forward, I am just very excited to get this done. Thank you.
All right. Next is A.J. Mallow.
Good evening, esteemed city councilmembers, administration, neighbors, and friends. My name is A.J., and I stand before you today as not just a resident, but as a proud Lakewood transplant of almost four years. When I first moved here, I was looking for a community that was open, vibrant, and generally accepting. What I found in Lakewood was more than I could ever have hoped for. I’ve always felt so safe, so welcomed, and so loved in this city. This feeling of belonging is something I cherish, and it’s a big part of why I’m here today. As a recently out-trans person, the current national and state political climate has been incredibly difficult. We’ve seen an alarming rise in hostile laws, hateful rhetoric, and outright discrimination against the trans people simply for existing. It can be easy to feel isolated and targeted. This is why the Lakewood gender freedom policy is so crucial. It’s a deep reassurance for me and my fellow trans neighbors. It’s a promise that Lakewood is and will remain a safe place for us all. This initiative gives me hope, that personal hope, as it reassures me that my dream of one day becoming a drag performer is possible in a city that welcomes and protects this art form. You see, Lakewood is more than just a city. It’s the unofficial gay capital of Ohio. Our streets are home to vibrant businesses, our venues host incredible performances, and our community is a mosaic of different people and identifies who live here and are LGBTQ. So many of us, allies included, come here for that very reason, drawn by the feeling of belonging, safety, community, and opportunity that this city offers. This policy isn’t about telling anyone what to believe, it’s about how we, as a diverse community, govern ourselves and ensure no one is discriminated against based on who they are. Our country was built on the separation of church and state, and this policy upholds that principle. This policy is a crucial step to ensure that city resources are not being wasted pushing or enforcing laws created with a certain agenda, laws that are questionable in legality and morality. This makes sure we have the same freedoms and protections that you, I, and everyone in this room expect and deserve, no matter personal beliefs, appearance, or ideology. It’s about making sure the scales of justice are balanced for all. And let me repeat, this initiative simply just states which items will be the highest priority to the city and receive the most taxpayer resources, and I believe using those resources to push an agenda of a certain group of people is a waste of taxpayer money. We’re taking action to ensure our city’s resources are never used to persecute or harm our trans residents. We’re making it clear that our investigations, or that investigations into gender-affirming care, accessing personal sensitive non-public documents, and arresting trans or drag performers first existing are the lowest possible priority. The economic and social health of Lakewood depends on our continued reputation as a welcoming city. If we fall to the anti-trans laws being pushed, we risk losing the businesses, the money, the people who make this city so special. This initiative assures everyone that they can continue to live, work, and visit Lakewood without fear of being targeted. It’s about showing that Lakewood is a city that values freedom, equality, and compassion for all its residents. Let’s pass this policy and prove that we are a sanctuary for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jewel McHasten.
Hello, and thank you for your time. I am here today to speak in favor of Lakewood adopting this resolution. As a northeast Ohio-born native, as someone with many, many loved ones in the LGBTQ and trans communities, Lakewood is the place that I have come since I was a young adult to feel safe, where my family and friends have come to feel safe. I’ve seen what the past year has done to my family and friends. The fear and hatred experienced by the trans community in particular has been intense and increasingly alarming. and increasingly alarming. I've seen my trans loved ones suffer, and I am here today to stand with them in solidarity and loving support, and these brave souls, brave and beautiful souls deserve nothing less. It's a shame, in my opinion, that sanctuary designations are even needed in a society that was founded on the belief that everyone is created equal and everyone deserves equal protection under the law. It has become increasingly clear that these designations are not only needed, but are essential in creating communities that are safe for everyone. LGBTQ people have always existed in our communities, they're our neighbors, our coworkers, and family members. They're not asking for special rights, just equal treatment, and concerns about equal treatment often start with just discomfort, or changes, or differences. Civil rights shouldn't wait for universal comfort. In a racial marriage, women's rights and disability accommodations also felt uncomfortable to some, but protecting people's fundamental dignity is always the right priority. As a mother to three precious children under ten, I feel that it is essential to raise this next generation with deep love and empathy towards all. My home is a safe haven for anyone in the community who needs it, and my children are being raised to love and accept themselves and others, and to use their privilege to help and support others through kindness and respect, as I am doing now. Research consistently shows that LGBTQ inclusive policies in education benefit all, including children. Kids with LGBTQ parents or who are LGBTQ themselves do better in accepting environments, other children learn empathy, and that diversity is normal. What genuinely harms the next generation is bullying, rejection, and teaching them that some people are less deserving of dignity. Protecting LGBTQ people doesn't confuse or harm anyone, it teaches everyone that everyone deserves respect. LGBTQ inclusive policies help attract and retain skilled workers, businesses, and entrepreneurs. The companies are increasingly prioritizing locations with strong nondiscrimination protections, and inclusive communities are seeing stronger economic growth. This designation would signal that Lakewood County is open for business to everyone. When we feel safe and accepted in our community, mental health outcomes improve dramatically. Reducing discrimination and stigma decreases rates of anxiety, depression, and suicide attempts, particularly among LGBTQ youth. This has affected my own personal family, and it's something that matters to me greatly. The benefits to the entire community through reducing these risks equals stronger social cohesion and better outcomes for everyone. A sanctuary declaration sends a powerful message that all residents are valued members of the community. This will strengthen even further the trust between LGBTQ residents and the local county government, encouraging civic participation, and helping to create a culture where everyone can contribute fully to a community where life can be lived without fear of discrimination or exclusion. A sanctuary designation doesn't require anyone with differing beliefs or lifestyles to celebrate or personally affirm anything, it simply means the government won't discriminate in providing services. No one's being asked to attend pride events or change private views, although plenty of that happens here anyway. We just want to live alongside people who are different with mutual respect, which is the foundation of a successful and diverse community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and next is Teri Knapp.
Good evening, and my name is Teri Knapp. I teach at Harding Middle School here in Lakewood, and I just want to publicly thank all of you on City Council for your continued forward thinking, the hard work, your undaunted commitment to the LGBTQ+ community. It doesn't go unnoticed, as an educator and an advisor of the Harding Middle School Pride Club, most of which is here tonight, a lot of young people here that go to school in this city, they hear what's happening up there loud and clear, and I can't thank you enough for that. They need to hear that as young people, you want those young people to stay in this city and, you know, look for the future of this city. You're doing the right thing, so thank you very much. Keep doing the hard work, don't give up, we got this.
Okay, and next, and I apologize if I'm, I'm not sure I'm reading your handwriting correctly. Clara?
Sorry, no.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, oh, good evening. My name is Clara Scanballone, and I am a student at Harding Middle School. I have come here today to thank everyone and anyone in this place. Your actions have not gone unnoticed, and we can feel the effect that they have every single day. Your support and caring for everyone makes the LGBTQ identity feel more safe and protective, protected, and it's just amazing that you guys can do this, and it's just making us feel so much more safer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Mackenzie Frato.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Frato. You've seen me before. I live on 1487 Ridgewood Avenue, I'm with Cleveland DSA, and I wanted to thank all of council for supporting this and pushing this forward and building on it from the legislation that we originally sent you, and all my comrades for being here, as well as community members. It makes me so happy to see the Pride Club. I was involved in the Pride Club in school, so you can do this too, like you can make this happen 10 years, when 10 years have passed for you. Yeah, I just really wanted to thank council for their commitment to our neighbors' joy and happiness and safety in every, every event that it exists. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sean Miller.
Hello, excuse me, hello council members. My name is Sean Miller. 10 years ago, my family and I moved to Lakewood. When we decided we wanted to move to Ohio, we searched for a very long time on a place that would be safe for me as a transgender person and a safe place for my family. I cannot explain how appreciative me, my family, and the other queer people in our community are of you guys and your continuous support of us. I know right now, me and pretty much every other queer person, specifically trans people in Ohio, are very scared, and it's been very hard for me and my family to stay in Ohio, so I really appreciate you guys making it easy to stay in Lakewood. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Anastasia K. I'll say, thank you.
Hello, my name is Anastasia Kuriluk. I am a resident of Lakewood, and I just wanted to express my support for this resolution and thank everybody who was involved in making it happen.
I'm sorry, I'm not reading, what's it? W? W. Wheely? Welly? Hmm, on Atkins? Okay, yeah, thank you, come on up, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I feel like I keep writing my name so fast. I don't know why I do that, but it's Ashley Lou Becky. Yeah, and I live on Atkins. So, I am here with DSA Cleveland, and I just wanted to say, well, I have a lot to say, sorry. And so, in January of this year, DSA Cleveland adopted a project in response to trans rights, attacks on trans rights happening in the nation and in the state. One of our goals was to introduce and pass a sanctuary city resolution in Lakewood. We researched, drafted, and presented this resolution to Lakewood in, I think about April of this year. We collected signatures from Lakewood residents to show support and worked with Sarah Keppl to get this resolution introduced. I am proud to finally see this on the agenda to likely be passed, granting further protection from, for trans residents in Lakewood. However, I want to address everybody in the room, this is in the end. Trans rights unfortunately will still be under attack in this nation, and it is up to every single one of us in this room to protect them, protect all of our neighbors, and push back against injustice. Thank you.
And, looking for Elizabeth, yep, come on up, I'm gonna butcher it again. Kytavich. Oh, I did it, I did it, okay, okay, good.
Hello, friends, happy to be back here again. My name is Elizabeth Kytavich. I am here on behalf of the LGBT Community Center of Greater Cleveland. First off, I want to express the regrets of Sean McCann from the ACLU. He wanted to be here tonight, but the plague got to him, so unfortunately, he won't be here with us tonight. But, I am here to formally address and voice my organization's strong support for the gender freedom policy being reviewed and hopefully voted on this evening. We at the center are proud to serve the LGBTQ+ community throughout the Greater Cleveland area and the Northeast Ohio region, and many of our community members live and work here in the city of Lakewood. We see this resolution as a vital and a proactive measure that aligns with our mission to advocate for the well-being of LGBTQ+ individuals. By ensuring the privacy of confidential healthcare information, this resolution allows our community members to access the care that they need without fear, and it ensures that city resources are focused on keeping our residents safe and secure. This is a clear and necessary step toward building a safer and more welcoming city, and it reinforces Lakewood's commitment to protecting its residents and prioritizing local resources in a way that directly benefits our community. So, I would like to thank President Keppl and also Councilmember Streetbig for their leadership on this issue, and on behalf of the center, I wanted to thank you for your commitment to this important work. We appreciate your leadership in taking this action to ensure that Lakewood remains a city where all residents can thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's everyone I have signed in to speak. Was there anyone else who wished to speak on this topic? Nope, oh, I saw a hand. Is that a hand, or, I don't want to be an auctioneer up here and make you come up if you don't want to be, okay, but I just want to make sure everyone's voice is heard who wants to be heard. So, thank you all so much for being here and for your advocacy. Oh, I do see, oh, there is a hand. Now, everybody's pointing each other, come on up, yep, come on up.
My name is Marlo Miller. I'm the communicator for the Harding Middle School Pride Club. I'm in eighth grade, and I would just like to say a tiny word, because I have so many trans classmates at my school, and it is so important to me that we pass this and make this decision, because I have seen, I have been tuning in to the injustice going on in our country right now, and it is really, really devastating, because I am afraid for both me and my friends and peers, and it is so, so important that this is passed, because my friends mean so much to me, and living here in the city of Lakewood, coming here for first and second grade, and leaving and coming back for fifth grade, and now I'm here, is just very, very special, and I am so grateful to live here right now. So, thank you so much.
So, thank you all for speaking up and for your engagement with this whole process. Believe it or not, this is actually a pretty quick process to get anything passed, but it's important that we get it right and that we get something that can be replicated by other city. But what's even more important is that, like some of you said, that we don't stop here, so I hope that everyone here tonight will continue to advocate, particularly at the state and federal level. We'll advocate with you, I'm sure. I know my council colleagues will stand beside us on that work as well, but it takes all of us working together on all of these issues that we're talking about tonight, whether it's gender freedom, or whether it's protecting the Hispanic community, or whether we're going to be talking about the Crown Act shortly, about hair discrimination for black folks, so, you know, all of us working together and supporting each other is how we're gonna tackle this at the state and federal level. So, thank you all for your advocacy so far, and I look forward to continuing the fight with you. All right, other comments from council members? Councilwoman Bullock.
Thanks, Madam President. Thank you to you and Councilwoman Streetbig for bringing the resolution forward. I'll be happy to support it. I see two, at least two family friends in the audience that I didn't necessarily know that were going to be here, but it's because you're doing the decent thing that you're making space for people I care about to be who they are, and I think that's important, to put it mildly. You know, it occurs to me, there's two kinds of democracy, and we've gone to a negative version of it nationally, and that's, you know, democracy can be, you get 51% of the vote, and all of a sudden, the majority can tyrannize others, take away rights. That's not how it's supposed to work. We've got the Bill of Rights, we've got the rule of law, those things are being systematically dismantled. The other kind of democracy is tolerance, respect, celebration of differences, celebration of diversity, and that word is kind of overused in some ways, and I think we kind of lose track of what it means. What it means is that, like tonight, we were cutting the ribbon at Lakewood Skate Park, and it was really, this really terrific moment where you had skaters of all generations, next to pickleball players, next to football players, there was a band there, there was great restaurants, just this emergent mashup of all the quirky, creative things that we are in this town, and now you layer on people being who they are in their gender identity. So, I think what we're doing is we're trying to carve out a space for the good kind of democracy, where we live together as neighbors, and Lakewood's always kept that in focus, and let's spread that light a little bit at a time going forward. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hamilton Steiner.
I just want to commend and speak directly to the students that used your voice, and you got up here to the podium, and you spoke your truth, and for those of you that are speaking, for your friends, and I think that is very, that is something to be commended, and I think, it's scary to get in front of anyone and talk and say anything, but the fact that you're doing it, and the fact that you're so aware of what's going on, it really gives me hope that we're gonna get through this, because you all are not just our future, you're our present, and I want you all to keep coming to meetings, I want you to be involved, and I want you to be engaged in your community, I want you to be engaged in this community. You are so important for now, and you're so important for our future, and I don't want you to forget that. Keep, keep fighting, keep using your voice, and keep advocating for yourself and for those that can't advocate for themselves.
Thank you. Any other council members? Vice President Baker.
Thank you, President Keppl, and I'd just like to commend you, you know, I know that there was pressure to get it done quickly, and I understand the urge and the desire behind that with recent events at a state and federal level, but I will say, you know, if you want it done right, Councilperson President Keppl is the person to go to and thoughtfully, and she did this through a surgery and some medical issues over the past couple of months, so I just want to thank you for your leadership, Councilperson Streetbig, you for your leadership on this issue. And as we were, Councilwoman Bullock brought up the skate park ribbon cutting, and I'm fortunate enough to have young kids that have practice at Lakewood Park in the evenings in the fall, and you look online, and there are real attacks going on against minority groups all over our country, and I just encourage folks to get out and touch grass, go to Lakewood Park, walk around, see our community, see the things that bring us together, and don't stop fighting against the things that are trying to divide us, but be reminded that there is a lot of commonality here, and our leaders do the best for us when they pull at our commonality and what we have to share and not at our differences. And this policy is deeply rooted in privacy, personal decisions, autonomy, which is just a core principle of us as a people and our culture generally, and so I want to thank you and Councilperson Streetbig for bringing this forward, and I'll support it tonight. Thank you.
Any further comments? Councilwoman Marks.
Yes, I too would like to thank you and Councilwoman Streetbig for bringing this forward, to remind us that Lakewood is a kind, loving community that embraces all people, and it is so important that we make our voices heard, and for you, you're young people, as Councilwoman Hamilton Steiner said, you are the future and you are the present, so I'm so proud of you that you came forward to use your voice. Keep it up, stay in Lakewood, we love you all.
Any other comments? All right, with that, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-. With that, we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-45. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. All right, we will. That's a first. Okay. Oh, thanks. All right, so we're going to come down and we'll do some pictures. We'll do, Council President, we'll do yours first, and then Hispanic heritage, and then we'll do the gender freedom one. So anyone who wants to come up for any of those, but we'll start with Council President Brusadz first, and then we'll go in that order.
At this point, just the whole audience is in doubt.
It screams America.
A bit of a...
Yeah, for sure. All right, we're going to move along with the rest of the meeting. If folks, if you could make your way into the hallway to continue your discussion so we can continue with the rest of the meeting, please. Thank you. You're welcome to come back anytime. You're welcome to stay if you'd like. Just quietly. All right.
All right, item number three. Resolution 2025-40, a resolution to take effect immediately, appointing one person to the Planning Commission for the five-year term beginning January 1st, 2026, and ending December 31st, 2030.
All right, friends in the back, can if you could either lower your voices or move to the hallway, I'd appreciate it so we can continue the rest of the meeting. Thank you. All right, so first, I'm going to move to discharge from Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion on that motion, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. And then, oh gosh. All right, and then I will move to substitute with the name Nick Miller.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Vice President Baker.
Yes, I thank you, Council President, and I just both want to thank the applicants. It was a really great pull of people. It was a hard decision. And I also want to thank you, Council President, for opening up this process. A lot of times, appointments are, you know, we get some applicants, and then we think about it, and we don't really coordinate in person. And I think as a charter bound body, we get two appointments, too. It's really important, so I appreciate you allowing this process for us to do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right, on the motion to substitute with the candidate Nick Miller, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. And then I will move to adopt a substitute.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item four, Ordinance 26, 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately to approve the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances and to provide for the publication of such new matter.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 10, Communication from Councilmembers Strebig and Steiner regarding support for Cuyahoga County's proposed Crown Act.
Who's taking the lead on this?
I am.
Councilwoman Strebig.
Thank you. Dear colleagues, please join us in signing the following letter in support of Cuyahoga County's pending legislation to prohibit race-based hair discrimination. The legislation known as the Crown Act stands for creating a respectful and open world for natural hair or crown. Cuyahoga County's initiative is based upon similar legislation adopted in 28 states and many municipalities, including Akron, Cincinnati, Cleveland Heights, and Columbus. Because of harmful bias, people of color oftentimes face a range of pressures to conform their hair and appearance to specific standards of beauty. Sometimes they are explicitly told that their hair is unprofessional or inappropriate and denied employment, educational, or housing opportunities. Other times, they are implicitly discriminated against through unfair exclusion and negative judgments. Cuyahoga County's Crown Act would make it illegal to discriminate against people for their natural hair texture and/or hairstyles such as braids, locks, or afros. Furthermore, it would update the county's employment handbook to include hair among protection trait, protected traits, to ensure that county workers are explicitly protected from race-based hair discrimination. Given the failure of similar legislation to succeed at the state level, we especially appreciate Cuyahoga County's leadership on this topic. If adopted, the Crown Act will apply to and benefit the residents of Lakewood. Cuyahoga County's Crown Act was introduced on September 9th and referred to committee. The legislation is estimated to receive a final vote later in October. Let's join together to let the county know that they have our support. I move that the attached letter be signed by all members of this body. Sincerely, myself and Councilmember Hamilton Steiner.
I will second that motion.
Councilwoman Hamilton Steiner, did you want to say a few words?
Yes. "I am not my hair. I am not the skin. I am not your expectations. I am a soul that lives within." These are lyrics to "I Am Not My Hair" by the artist India Ari. It took me a long time to accept the beauty and the struggle of my black hair. Growing up in Lakewood, it was enough to be othered based on the color of my skin, but the additional burden of having completely different hair and the complexities of my black hair made it an additional layer of struggle that no child or adult should have to endure. Spending summers at the pool wreaked an additional level of havoc and grief that I did not quite understand until I was an adult and had children of my own and dealt with those hair challenges firsthand. This othering of my hair did not end in childhood, but continued into adulthood, as I've been told previously, that my hair was not professional or that it was nappy when it was in its natural kinky curly, kinky curly, coily curly frostate. However, whenever my hair was chemically altered, I was deemed acceptable. Psychologically, I felt as though I better fit in when in predominantly white spaces and places. The Crown Act is sadly much-needed legislation as hair bias lending to discrimination is still very much a factor in society. Assumptions are made regarding hairstyles and whether or not it's professional, and who determines what is professional or not is enforcing Eurocentric standards of beauty that is steeped in systemic oppression. Further, not understanding the complexities which exist for varying ethnic hair varieties and not allowing for these types of styles causes harm and perpetuates racial and ethnic stereotypes and self-hatred that exists in non-white Eurocentric communities. The Crown Act is not just a piece of legislation which encourages living and acceptance of our own skin and hair, it will also protect individuals from emotional and discriminatory harm. I encourage my council colleagues to sign off on this letter and support Cuyahoga County Council in this legislation, and encourage advocacy and support for the state legislation that was reintroduced by Representative Juanita O'Brant, which would provide protection to students and public schools from hair discrimination and unfair disciplinary action. I further encourage everyone to educate themselves in particular on the history of black hair and racism and the politics of black hair. It is an important topic for anyone to learn and understand from, and there's quite the litany of research available to become informed. Knowledge is power, and I encourage all of you to challenge what you currently know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments from other councilmembers?
Certainly happy to support, and thank you very much for bringing this forward. And O'Brant worked on this a long time at the State House and should be passed by now, but if, since it isn't, at least let's get it passed in Cuyahoga County, right?
We do have Shirley Nelson signed in to speak. Sorry to make you wait, Shirley. I should have moved this to the top, too, so. But there's a lot going on tonight, so thanks for coming and being here.
Thank you, esteemed councilmembers and Councilwoman Keppel. I wrote my comments down because I thought I would cry, so I thought I better write it out. Thank you, Councilwoman Hamilton Steiner, for inviting me to speak on the proposed legislation for the Crown Act, creating a respectful and open world for natural hair. When I Googled it, I began to weep. All I could think about were the 75 years I have been in the struggle and the 500 years black people have endured bitter, hateful looks and remarks due to our natural hair and beautiful pigment. I graduated from high school in 1968 and left my parents' home in 1969. As a symbol of freedom, one of the first things I did was to cut my hair extremely short and wear it natural. I loved me and I loved my hair. Over the years, I went back and forth between perms and wigs and braids and locks and color, the whole gamut, because I allowed others to influence me. All of the slights and microaggressions cut like a knife against my black soul, but the ones that hurt the most were from my own people who had internalized racist views and were uncomfortable with their own blackness. My first husband called me a black, nappy-headed bitch when he couldn't have his way. My second husband started working on me shortly after marriage and begged me to get a perm. Back and forth I went, even though my soul knew I was a natural woman. I say this legislation is a long time coming, and it must pass by any means necessary to help save the souls of black people. It is a reminder that we are enough just the way we are. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just say, not only enough, but very much appreciated, so thank you. Thank you for being here. That's the only person I have signed in to speak on this in the public. Did anyone else want to speak before I run?
All right, any other comments from councilmembers? So this letter will be forwarded to the county council to express Lakewood City Council's support.
All right. All right, so we have a motion to apply all councilmembers' signatures and send. And we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 11, Communication from President Keppel regarding council budget priorities.
Okay. Dear colleagues, as you know about this time, the Finance Department begins pulling together a proposed operational budget and five-year capital plan in accordance with the following sections of the charter, which I won't read. It has historically been council's practice to articulate council budget priorities to the administration for incorporation into the budget and capital planning. This can be difficult to do once the proposed budget has already been prepared and carefully balanced by the Finance Department. So council has worked over the past few years to be prepared to share these priorities earlier in the process. Therefore, council held two retreats earlier this year to identify legislative and budget priorities. As council leadership recognizes the limits
As council leadership recognizes the limits of city resources, including staff, time, and tax dollars, councilmembers were given a finite number of spoons to indicate spoons of energy that they would commit to a policy priority and finite number of moneybags to indicate budget priorities. The attached chart provides a summary of those priorities. It is my hope that providing the summary to council and the administration in advance will help facilitate a smooth, efficient, and effective budget process. I will first move to, I guess, let me just double-check, but Councilman Bullock, I was thinking I would refer this to Finance, and you could continue your work from there. Does that work for you?
All right. So I will move to refer to Finance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
I will say that we've had quite a bit of conversation, and we, and I appreciate the council clerks also supporting our process and helping to pull together from all of our little charts and things. So as you review the chart, if you see anything that I have missed or is inaccurate, you know, please bring that up as we go through the budget process, too. And you can also be reaching out to the administrative departments that you hope to work with in the coming year.
Okay. All right. On the motion seconded to refer to Finance, any further discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Bullock.
So, it's very helpful, thank you. Maybe I could do a quick, you know, interaction with the Finance Department here and the administration, the mayor. So if we pass the motion in a moment, it'll be before Finance Committee. If we were to call a Finance Committee hearing in October at some point, would that be helpful and timely? I know, Jessica, you're not Director Mahoney, even though says it there that you are, but would it be a helpful dialogue to, in the midst of your budget binder development, to have this dialogue in a committee session with council to find ways to incorporate some of the priorities enumerated in the, in the resolution, in the letter? And would it be timely, is also kind of my question?
Thank you, Councilman. I think most of these priorities are priorities we've been discussing over the last year or more, so as I look through them, most of them are accounted for in operating budget. That answers your question.
Okay. In part, it does. And so, I guess, what I, what I could anticipate, council process being, would be, in the front end, do some dialogue in the month of October, go through our regular budget process during the months of November and December, but also reserving the right that City Council may have supplementary budget legislation or amendment to some of the normal budget legislation, when and if there's one or more specific items that we would want to especially address. That's, that's not something we have right now, but that's something I've talked about with my colleagues in the retreats and so forth. So, just in the spirit of trying to talk through a process beforehand, want to, want to put out that possibility to the administration. Thanks.
Yeah, I would just make sure, you know, that we always produce a structurally balanced budget, so it is a best practice would be to maintaining a structurally balanced budget. If there were amendments, then I would encourage you to work with Finance Department and department heads to see where, where cuts to certain departmental budgets would be to maintain that structurally balanced budget.
And I think in that spirit, too, is, most of the priorities are operational, some of them are, were capital, so a review of capital planning might be better to do, both by, by members of council, to review the existing five-year capital plan and where things are already planned out, and then if you're anticipating wanting changes or wanting to check with Finance about what is expected to be proposed, then that can be done sooner rather than later, to the mayor's point.
Madam President, it's a good point, and we, of course, won't know how that all plays out until we get into it, because we don't have the, you know, the administration still preparing their version, and we, we won't be able to respond or react to that. And also, you know, different, different decision-makers are going to make different judgment calls about relative priorities and what's affordable this year versus next year, et cetera. So that's, I think, the spirit of the, of the normal budget process. But I take the point of the mayor that, you know, structurally balanced is important, and we can pursue that. Thanks.
I think the, the whole point is to try to get it in so that it's not after there's a structurally balanced budget prepared, is that we can be having these conversations now. That's kind of why we started this early and produced this list early, so that those conversations can be happening before we have to do, you know, rearrange everything. So that was kind of the intention, or has been the intention.
Yeah, just to, if I may, just to echo that point, I would, if there's something specific, I would encourage you to work with Finance sooner rather than later, as all departments have gone through their budgeting process, so Finance is in the process of putting it all together. So the sooner any of those specifics, Councilman, to your point, the sooner we get those, the easier it would be to potentially try to incorporate those. As you know, the majority of the operating budget is for, to fund general government and our city employees as well. So there is a finite number of dollars, so just be remembering, remembering that as we go through this.
So with that, I would just say, councilmembers, because we put this in a succinct list, just so that we have a documentation of what we discussed, because we can't just be talking about it as a body anywhere, but they won't, directors aren't mind readers to know what exactly is meant by all these points, so if, if one of these is your championed cause, now is a good time to be discussing that with the administration, so that they understand that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to refer the communication to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 12, Report from Vice President Baker regarding September meeting of the Lakewood Alive Board of Directors.
Vice President Baker.
Thank you. Dear colleagues, Lakewood Alive Board of Directors met on September 17th, 2025, at the Lakewood Public Library for its bi-monthly meeting. The meeting started by discussing the new board alumni program intended to engage former board members in the current activities at Lakewood Alive, and there's an event planned for November, and there's a recap of the new member board orientation event held on September 4th. Various committees then gave their updates, including information from the Marketing Committee about the new Lakewood Alive website, and the Community and Placemaking and Design Committee also provided an update on walking surveys that committee members and volunteers are completing to identify any issues and eventually report them to the city. This work will dovetail nicely with the newly formed Case Advisory Board. Councilmembers looking to get more involved with and support Lakewood Alive can attend events or talk with me about joining the committee or participating in a volunteer project. For a full list, please subscribe to our weekly newsletter. And of note, the Spooky Pooch Parade is set to take place on October 11th, starting at 12:30 at Madison Park, and the immense popular light-up Lakewood is scheduled for December 6, 2025. Lastly, Lakewood Alive has requested a referral of this correspondence to the committee of council's choosing to provide council with a more detailed update on Lakewood Alive's recent accomplishments and opportunities for more collaboration with the city. In line with that, I will make a motion to refer this communication to the Housing Planning and Development Committee.
Motion's been made and seconded to refer to Housing Plan and Development. Any further discussion? Thank you, Vice President Baker, for the update. All right. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 13, Report from Councilmember Evans regarding Tree Advisory and Education Board Update.
Councilmember Evans.
Dear colleagues, the Tree Advisory and Education Board met in August/September with the Fall Tree Giveaway a highlight of both meetings. The giveaway commenced on September 17th with all 200 trees being claimed within 48 hours. Once again, the TAEB collaborated with the Arbor Day Foundation to curate a mix of trees appropriate for our region, this time concentrating on smaller ornamental species that have been popular within the community. Those who claim trees will pick them up this Saturday, October 11th. Board members have been coordinating with staff at Cove Community Center and myself to create intergenerational programming in its outdoor spaces. With 168 different plant species on the property, the Cove campus is a test case for a mini arboretum concept that could translate well to other city parks. Signage identifying tree types is in the works, as are other educational and programming initiatives on the campus. The Lakewood Garden Club intends to make a contribution toward a memorial gift entrance way to this new mini arboretum. In other public city spaces, the TAEB is working with the City Forestry Department to place signage identifying trees at Lakewood Park and are working with Lakewood Public Library to update story walks at Madison and Kaufman Park with tree-related books. Several TAEB members attended this year's Cuyahoga Tree Summit in Rocky River, where they learned about tree, tree and plant supply issues in northeast Ohio. Board members are also working on a grant application with the Healthy Lakewood Foundation, continuing their work throughout the community, and TAEB will also have a presence at this year's Welcome to Lakewood event. The board also looks forward to visiting council this fall to discuss all of this year's accomplishments. If any of my colleagues or members of the public have questions about Tree Advisory Board, please don't hesitate to reach out. I'll move to receive and file this report.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Just say, once again, very impressive, all the work that is going on there. And do we know when their, their report is coming to us?
We do not.
Okay. So if we wanted to get that, were we hoping to get that scheduled before the end of the?
Yes.
Okay. We'll touch base after. Okay. So on the motion to receive and file the report, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 14, Report from Councilmember Evans regarding Downtown Business Alliance Update.
Councilmember Evans again.
The Lakewood Downtown, Lakewood Downtown Business Alliance, DLBA, held its monthly meeting on Thursday, September 4th. The big news of the summer for DLBA is the expansion of its boundary, which moved from the corner of Detroit North to the corner of Detroit and Summit. This expansion adds a significant number of businesses to the DLBA footprint that will allow for more robust dialogue-enhanced event opportunities, including this year's Chocolate Walk, which will take place on October 23rd. Chocolate Walk tickets went on sale September 27th, with the event expected to sell out quickly as usual. I didn't check today, but I would imagine tickets are gone. The organization has recently entered into a partnership with Winterhurst to market all the shops and restaurants in downtown to people visiting the area, arena. This collaboration is intended to drive visitors from elsewhere to Lakewood establishments, as Winterhurst enjoys robust visitation from people throughout northeast, northeast Ohio and beyond. This marketing push will soon be bolstered by a part-time marketing social media coordinator. Finally, DLBA is preparing to invest in a strategic plan that will guide the organization through the next three to five years. The plan is envisioned to align resources with internal goals and chart a course for programming, growth, and sustainability. If any of my colleagues or members of the public have questions about DLBA, please don't hesitate to reach, reach out. Move to receive and file this report.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 15, Report from Councilmember Strebig regarding September meeting of the Community Recreation Education Commission.
Councilmember Strebig.
Thank you. Dear colleagues, the Lakewood Community Recreation and Education Commission met on September 6th, 16th, excuse me, at 6:00 PM in the TAF Center for Innovation. During public comment, I asked about outdoor basketball options at schools, and the conversation began about where it was available and where it was not. A full review was suggested, and a history of positive results and negative instances was discussed. This should return to the agenda next month for an update and further discussion. Members from the Lakewood Community Baseball and Softball Association Board were present and recognized for their work to update their bylaws with a focus on safety. The programs have seen continued growth over the last three years, especially in girls' softball. They are currently working to fill a board position in this commission. In France, reported that the skateboard camps are full, and after 10 years, there is a 100% Lakewood resident enrollment. A ribbon-cutting ceremony has been scheduled and held tonight with the mayor at the new skate park. The Coordinator of Community Recreation Education, Leslie Faver, reported that the fall brochure was sent out with some difficulties with postal carrier delays. In celebration of the 100th year of community recreation, 100 Days of Giveaways is underway with a raffle program for anyone that has participated in a program. The outdoor pools are now closed, and attendance at Foster was up and attendance at Bex was down. Summer athletics ended on time after a wet spring, and camps had another successful year. Class program numbers are up, and power outages have caused some issues at the schools. Lastly, the track updates have been completed. Mark Walters from the school showed the presentation prepared for the Board of Education. Participation numbers are up, especially so with girls' softball and volleyball. Surveys showed that 80% of those participating plan to return, and survey participant, participants will continue. Referee, umpire, and lifeguarding classes are now offered as a physical education class at the high school. Sincerely, me.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that report?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Vice President Baker.
Yeah, thank you, Council President, and Councilperson Strebig, or the mayor. It'd be really, I know we've had a couple meetings over the years, and all the years blend together, about the pools and attendance and kind of where we're at. It seemed, as a user of the pool, it seemed like it was a pretty good summer, good attendance, but just would be curious if maybe sometime later this, in the winter or early spring, before we get rolling with the new rec catalog that goes out to the public, if we could have a committee hearing or communication to talk about it and invite the rec department here? I think it'd be a helpful way to go about it.
Yep, absolutely.
Any further comment? Councilman Bullock?
Thanks, Madam President. Thanks, Councilwoman Strebig, for the report and for the, the point you made about asking the commission about outdoor basketball at school facilities, because Lakewood parks have some space. School facilities have even more potential space. So, and I'm reading what you wrote, but did they, can you share any more detail? Did they know the answer to the question, or they had to check their own memories to be able to answer it clearly and they'll get back to us? Is that the idea?
Yeah, they, they had some ideas on where they, there were basketball courts, but they didn't know for sure if, you know, there were certain schools that they were unfamiliar with that had basketball courts. So they were going to do a full review and then keep this conversation going.
Okay. So it sounds as if it's facility by facility, not district-wide policy or something like that?
I would say yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other councilmembers? Question? All right. On the motion to receive and file the report, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 16, Report from Councilmember Strebig regarding September meeting of the Youth Council.
Councilmember Strebig.
Thank you. Dear colleagues, Lakewood Youth Council met on September 25th in the auditorium at City Hall. The group reviewed 10 applications to fill four open seats. Interviews will begin with five to eight candidates. We received, I'm sorry, we reviewed a gender-neutral bathroom resolution and discussed the difference between a resolution and an ordinance, and they agreed that signage for gender-neutral restrooms on single-use facilities should be in an ordinance. I explained that while looking at signage language in the city code, I noticed the word "him" written and wondered if there were instances where this was exclusionary. I suggested a code review committee to look further into the city codes and make recommendations for updates and changes, and they are considering this as a committee for their youth council. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 17, Communication from Public Works Director Gordon regarding Bunce Road rehabilitation and lead service line replacement.
Director Gordon.
Thank you. Dear President Kepel and members of City Council, the above referenced project entails the rehabilitation-led service line replacements for Bunce Road, including sewer and pavement improvements. The attached resolution is required in order to move forward with the funding for a lead line portion of the project. The city is securing up to $732,550 in funding through the Water State Revolving Loan Act, excuse me, Loan Account, WSRLA, which includes 53% principal forgiveness for lead service line replacements and related necessary items. This $732,550 project is expected to be funded as follows. I certainly won't read through all that. I request that City Council approve and pass the attached legislation on first reading so that the project may proceed and be prepared for EPA funding. Please let me know if you have any further questions. Again, I just want to remind council, this is something we've gone, gone with in the past on all of our water main projects, as well as our lead service line replacement projects. Understanding that the WSRLA funding is available, we want to jump on it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file the communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Vice President Baker.
Just like to commend the Public Works Department. I know I was speaking with an engineer I work with, that used to be a city engineer, and he said, "You guys pay for all the lead line replacement for residents?" And I said, "Yes." And he said, "They're lucky." And so I think that not everyone realizes how good our Public Works Department and how on top of we are with lead line replacements. So I just want to appreciate you guys' efforts.
Thank you. And agreed. Thank you, and we always appreciate you finding Thank you, and we always appreciate you finding money for us as well. Any further discussion on the communication? Hearing none. On the motion to receive and file, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item eighteen, Resolution 2025-52, a resolution authorizing the mayor-director of Public Works, finance director, or purchasing manager to apply for, accept, and enter into a water-supply revolving loan account agreement on behalf of the City of Lakewood for the construction of the 2026 lead service line replacement project and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item nineteen, communication from Public Works Director Gordon regarding the Bunce Road Rehabilitation Project ODOT Transportation Alternative Program Grant.
Director Gordon.
Thank you again, council, for the previous passing. Dear President Keppel and members of City Council, the city's Division of Engineering was awarded $2,944,717 from the ODOT Transportation Alternatives Program Grant for the Bunce Road Rehabilitation Project. In the past, ODOT has approved 80% of the eligible costs in federal funds through the Transportation Alternative Program. The Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act allows TAP projects to be funded using 80% federal TAP funding matched with 20% federal safety funding, up to a maximum of $2,944,717 in federal funds. These funds will be available in state fiscal year 2026, and it is crucial that each party is committed to meeting the milestone dates established. Failure to meet the other agreed-upon milestone dates could also result in withdrawal of funding by ODOT. Pursuant to Lakewood Codified Ordinance Section 111.14B, this letter serves as notice of our intention to accept these funds. Please let me know if you have any further questions.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Councilman Hamilton Steiner.
Just curious if the federal shutdown or anything, Director Gordon, if, if there's been any communication so far, and I know they're still trying to figure out budgets and all that, if essentially this federal funding is at risk at all of not coming?
We have not heard that this federal funding is at risk.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. We do have, well, this is just on the communication. Okay, so, oh, this is just a communication. So we do have several public comments, e-commerce, which councilmembers had access to and are up on the screen. I don't think I have anyone signed in to speak, though, on this. Do we have another sign-in sheet? Did you guys want to speak on this? Okay.
Oh, wait.
Okay. Okay, all right. All right, so then, on the motion to receive and file the communication, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twenty, communication from Planning Director Byington regarding authorization to sell real property located at 1472 Bell Avenue.
Director Byington.
Thank you. Dear Council President Keppel and members of City Council, the City of Lakewood's affordable housing strategy is committed to utilizing federal home funds to expand homeownership opportunities for low moderate-income households. The Division of Community Development is pleased to inform City Council that the rehabilitation of the city-owned, single-family home located at 1472 Bell Avenue is nearing completion and will be available for sale to low moderate-income households this fall. As such, the administration is requesting authorization to list and sell 1472 Bell Avenue. To ensure there is sufficient time to properly screen potential buyers, effectively market, and sell the home, the requested authorization period is 180 days. We respectfully request this ordinance be referred to the committee deemed appropriate by City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning, I'm thinking of referring the ordinance to Housing Planning Development. Do you want the communication as well?
Yes, because it has the chart.
Yep. All right, so I'll move to refer to Housing Planning and Development.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twenty-one, ordinance 28, 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately authorizing and directing the Director of Planning and Development or the mayor to enter into an agreement with a licensed real estate broker to market for sale the real property located at 1472 Bell Avenue for a period of 180 days pursuant to Section 15507 of the codified ordinances.
Move to refer to Housing Planning and Development.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twenty-two, communication from Chief Information Officer Coletta regarding adoption of cybersecurity program.
Officer Coletta.
Dear President Keppel and members of City Council, pursuant to ORC Section 9.64, the City of Lakewood Division of Information Technology created a cybersecurity program to safeguard the city's data, information technology, and information technology resources to ensure availability, confidentiality, and integrity. Division C of this section requires the legislative authority to pass legislation adopting this program. The details of the program have been shared with you in advance and are not attached to this letter due to the security nature of the information contained therein. Per Divisions E and F, the information contained within the program is exempt from public records laws. I respectfully request Lakewood City Council pass legislation adopting the city's cybersecurity program. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file the communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Sorry that you guys had to sit through this whole meeting just to get to this, but I would kind of like to send the resolution to committee of the whole, and we can do executive session just to talk through it a little bit, if that's all right, just so, you know, I'd like to nerd out on these things. Okay, so, but on the motion to refer the communication, or receive and file the communication, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twenty-three, Resolution 2025-53, a resolution to take effect immediately adopting the City of Lakewood cybersecurity policy.
Although, actually, this could go to rules and ordinances. Councilwoman Hamilton Steiner?
Sure.
All right. Let's do that. We'll move to refer to rules and ordinances.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilman Bullock.
Just as a preview, I'm curious, Mr. Coletta, the, is the nature of what you're proposing for adoption, is it merely a technical implementation of what the state's requiring, or is it, is there a framework? And IT is making a series of specific and custom recommendations, given our mix of equipment, our architecture, our data, infrastructure, you know, so is the decisions here a matter of kind of coming into compliance, and you'll, we'll get, we'll talk about the details of what the state requirements are, or is it more, hey, we're thinking through what is custom-fit to our city, let's talk about and think that through?
It's largely technical, but it is affirming our commitment to certain frameworks that are considered best practice now. But it's basically a mixture of documentation that we have, also, you know, itemizing all of our systems and, and, you know, what's at risk if something were to happen, as well as, you know, the various technologies that we employ to mitigate those threats. So, yeah, I don't know if that answers your question, but, you know, this is a new law from the state. Basically, it's going across the country, and there were some recent high-profile breaches nearby that I think, you know, precipitated this action from the state. But the law goes into effect, actually, it went into effect for reporting any sort of breach on September 30th, but the entire law goes into effect on January 1st, so.
Okay, thank you. I think that does, it sounds as if they're requiring us to comply with new standards, and then we're proposing to ourselves how we're going to meet those standards.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so on the motion to refer to rules and ordinances, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twenty-four, communication from Law Director Vargo regarding Public Health Services.
Director Vargo.
Thank you. Dear President Keppel and members of City Council, attached is a resolution that, if adopted, would permit Mayor George to enter into an agreement with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health to provide public health services in Lakewood for the calendar years 2026 and 2027. The legislation would renew the relationship with the county for public health services pursuant to Ohio revised code. Our current agreement with the county expires December of 2025. Resolution is complete for adoption based on past practice this evening, or if you prefer referral to committee. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, when, so when I was Chair of Health and Human Services, I believe we had the county come in, so we just, we could kind of touch base with them around this. Is that your preference, Councilwoman Marks? Okay. Would you like the communication or just the ordinance? The communication as well. All right, so I'll move to refer the communication to Health and Human Services.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twenty-five, Resolution 2025-54, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing the mayor to enter into a two-year agreement commencing January 1st, 2026, with the District Advisory Council of Cuyahoga County, Ohio General Health District, for the provision of public health services within the City of Lakewood, an amount not to exceed $456,444 for the calendar year 2026, and $511,458 for the calendar year 2027.
Move to refer to Health and Human Services?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item twenty-six, communication from Law Director Vargo regarding submerged lands leases.
Director Vargo.
Thank you. Dear President Keppel and members of City Council, attached for your consideration are five separate resolutions, which are required by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for the permitting process for lakefront property owners to obtain submerged land leases. In this instance, the property owners are seeking the lease in order to construct coastal erosion control measures. The resolutions are for the property set forth in the letter. This matter was referred to and analyzed in great detail by the Division of Engineering. The city engineer has found no encroachments on any interests of the City of Lakewood and has approved the submittals. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and so all these next resolutions are all part of this, right? So.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Well, first, thinking, should we do Public Works and Sustainability? Would you like the communication? Okay. So we'll move to refer to Public Works and Sustainability.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Vice President Baker.
I guess the only question I have is, familiar with submerged land leases, don't know about timing. If, are these folks expecting these to be passed today, and there's project funding at issue, or is it okay if it takes a couple meetings to hear in committee?
Thank you, Councilman, through the President. I don't know the answer to your question, but the fact that we don't know is probably means it's not urgent, so we can refer. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't tying up funding or whatever. Sounds like we're not, so.
Sure, thank you for that.
Fair question. Yeah, they'd probably let us know. Okay, so on the motion to refer to Public Works and Sustainability, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I'm going to move to suspend the rules to read items 27 through 31 concurrently.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and we need a roll call?
Vice President Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Bullock. Councilmember Evans. President Keppel.
Yes.
Councilmember Marks. Councilmember Steiner.
Yes.
Councilmember Strebig.
Yes.
Item 27, Resolution 2025-55, a resolution to take effect immediately approving the use of submerged lands for property located at 1025 Nicholson Avenue in order to permit the owners the opportunity to construct the proposed shore structure. Item 28, Resolution 2025-56, a resolution to take effect immediately approving the use of submerged lands for property located at 1031 Nicholson Avenue in order to permit the owners the opportunity to construct the proposed shore structure. Item 29, Resolution 2025-57, a resolution to take effect immediately approving the use of submerged lands for property located at 1040 Erie Cliff Drive in order to permit the owners the opportunity to construct the proposed shore structure. Item 30, Resolution 2025-58, a resolution to take effect immediately approving the use of submerged lands for property located at 1041 Forest Cliff Drive in order to permit the owners the opportunity to construct the proposed shore structure. Item 31, Resolution 2025-59, a resolution to take effect immediately approving the use of submerged lands for property located at 1039 Forest Cliff Drive in order to permit the owners the opportunity to construct the proposed shore structure.
Move to refer to Public Works and Sustainability.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 32, September 2025, Finance Department vendor report submitted pursuant to Lakewood Codified Ordinance 11103.
Move to receive and file?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 50, I mean, 33.
Feels like 50.
Pico Cafe LLC, 16203 Hilliard Road.
Director Vargo.
Thank you, Madam President. We respectfully request an extension.
Sure. All right, move to defer?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. And we are finally to public comment. We have some e-commerce in the public comment. I think everyone here knows the drill. When I call your name, come up, the microphone's already on, and you'll have up to five minutes to address the chair. That's me. And first up is Cesar Vargas.
Good evening. Thank you. Certainly past my bedtime. My name is Cesar Vargas. I live at 17501 Daleview Drive. My wife, excuse me, my wife Brianna and I have lived in Lakewood for over 25 years. We've raised three boys here, and we often comment, excuse me, on what a great place Lakewood is. We love living here. I am the current art teacher at Harding Middle School. I've taught art in Lakewood over 10 years, and four years ago, I introduced the game of handball to our students at Harding. Handball was, it originated in Ireland, and it was introduced to the States in the 1800 by immigrating Irish. If you think of, like, racquetball, handball is just like that without the rackets, just a ball and a wall. I started a handball club three years ago at Harding, and we currently have 45 handball players at Harding Middle School. We meet four days a week at 7:00 AM, and these kids show up to play. There are also 20 handball players at Lakewood High School who have gone away but still called back and say, "Hey, when can we play?" All that is great, however, the only place to play in Lakewood is at Harding Middle School. The kids don't have access to the gym on their own. They want to play and need a place to play. We need a handball court in Lakewood. It could be as easy as repurposing one of our many tennis courts. We could remove one of the nets, put up a wall, and give Lakewood its first two handball courts. I hope you consider putting up a handball court in Lakewood. We'll definitely use it. We're going to continue to grow, and we need a place to, to do that growth outside of I'm willing to talk about it to whoever wants to listen. I have ideas on what we could do to, to make that happen, and thank you.
Sorry, I'm just picturing like all the walls in Lakewood. It's like, sorry, I just need to find out more information, I think, from you later. So, I mean, yeah, yeah, well.
I'd look too, and I can't find the right spot.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll chat, or maybe Councilwoman Strebig and L-Cack too, or L-Cack, L-Rack. It's a long one. C-Rack, oh my gosh, you guys, this is a long night. Anyway, but we'll talk. Okay, so, thank you, and thanks for sitting through. All right, next up is Matt Herbert.
Good evening, Matt Herbert, 1448 Bunce Road. I like that idea very much. That's not why I'm here, though. I don't have much to say. My wife did send an email to you all a while back, but maybe two weeks ago. It was from Bloomberg News. It was a link to, she wrote a rather extensive preamble, but there was a link to Bloomberg News article by Ted Mann. It was published on September 22nd, 2025. I don't know if you all have had a chance to read that. I urge you to. It talks about the clawback that the federal government is doing for bike lanes, bike paths. It's an auto-centric, I guess, idea. Safe Streets for All is one of the things that they brought up, that the funding is being pulled back from, actually funding that's been provided to these cities. The federal government has taken it back through, you know, obviously through the state, through ODOT, but these programs are in jeopardy. You might want to talk to your colleagues in San Diego County, Fairfield, Alabama, Boston's Mattapan Square neighborhood, and Albuquerque, New Mexico. You might want to get an idea of whether those funds will be available for this Bunce Road project. I know we're relying on funds, I think some of it is actually from the Safe Streets for All, but other government programs. It's in jeopardy. All those states, all those municipalities that I've just mentioned, they've had their funds pulled back for multimodal paths and bike initiatives. In fact, I think Fairfield, Alabama, had a 10-foot wide multimodal path that they had planned that they've lost the federal funding for. And I will say that that's money that was already given to them. The federal government is actually going back to the municipalities and taking that money back. I would like to say that I brought that up about a year ago. I warned everybody here in the same setting that we should be very cognizant of the fact that that money is not ours until it's actually spent, and my words have proven prophetic, I hate to say, okay? And it does make me think I could be right about other things about this Bunce Road project, and so I would urge you all to maybe pay more attention, not only to myself, but other people that bring these ideas to you, because we're paying attention, we're doing the research, we're looking at it. This could be an issue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Amy Herberger.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Amy Herberger. Let me be crystal clear. I am deeply alarmed by the plan being pushed forward on Bunce Road. It seems rushed, lacking proper research, with little understanding of how this road actually functions, and no regard for environmental, structural, or community consequences that will follow. Removing mature trees and paving over unstable, decaying root systems isn't just short-sighted, it's dangerous. This puts the landscape at risk, threatens pedestrian safety, and undermines structural integrity of the area in front of residential homes. I am generally terrified by the accidents and emergency situations this poorly thought-out plan will inevitably cause. Moving forward without fully evaluating these risks borders on negligence. If injuries or worse occur, responsibly, we'll rest squarely on this administration. It will be a failure to protect the city and its residents. I have serious questions. What's the plan and the budget for fixing pavement collapse caused by decaying roots? Where are the studies showing the impact on tree canopy biodiversity and soil, one, five, 10 years down the line? And who pays for that damage? What's being done to prevent hazards from uneven pavement and heat exposure? What official safety data supports this design? And why hasn't it been publicly shared? Where's the record of resident consultation? Why were Bunce Road residents left out? Why is Lakewood moving forward without a full safety audit? Why remove a safe sidewalk and force kids, seniors, bikes, and e-bikes onto a path, especially one used by schoolchildren and for neighborhood games? Does this design meet ODOT and federal safety standards? It does not. Why take residents' treelons and sidewalks without proper notification or data to justify it? Can emergency vehicles safely access the narrow road? And who reviewed this? How will the collisions and driveway and crossing, how will collisions at driveways and crossings be prevented? All 116. Why wasn't a separate sidewalk and bike lane considered? Who will be liable when someone gets hurt? How will the path be maintained year-round, clearing snow, leaves, and trash? Why was the, what's the plan for managing event and school traffic congestion? How was it even reviewed? What is the total cost, initial and ongoing, and who will pay? Because residents do not want this. Where are the usage projections, and how were they calculated? Where is the cost-benefit analysis? This is basic due diligence. And finally, why follow a national trend that even other cities and other federal governments are now abandoning? Recent news shows cities pulling funding and reconsidering these flawed, and reconsidering these flawed designs. The New York Times reports battling e-bikes, horses, and pedestrians, even in Central Park, a park! Bloomberg report federal trail and bike lane grants are being canceled. This project, project doesn't meet ODOT standards. These multimodal designs are outdated, and you are putting our neighborhood at serious risk because you haven't done your homework. And I urge council to pause this project and truly listen to the people who live here. 1,400 on a petition, nobody's paying attention. This is not just about one tree or one street. It's about safety, accountability, and the legacy you leave behind. Poor design equals a poor outcome for all. Please rethink this project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Shannon Mortland.
I also submitted comments for tonight, but decided I had a few more things I would like to say. You know, we stood up here tonight, and we saw a lot of important resolutions come through. Protection for all, those are admirable, necessary, and very important. What I don't understand is when we're going to those lengths, and that's great, but why are the residents and homeowners of Bunce not that important? Like Amy said, more than 1,300 signatures, approaching 1,400, and we still don't matter. Why is that? I'm confused, baffled. We heard tonight that there's a finite number of resources in the city budget. So how in the world are we going to pay for maintenance on this path if we don't have, we don't have the money? You know, furthermore, I guess I just encourage you to, to just get rid of the path. You know what we want. You know what the neighbors do not want on Bunce Road. We do not want that. The homeowners don't want it. Just focus on needs, not wants. Work smarter now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and then last signed in is Cassie Organ.
Hi, good evening. As you all know, I'm in favor of the Bunce Road rehab project and seeing additional active transportation initiatives and efforts continue throughout the City of Lakewood. So with that being said, I did want to thank the City of Lakewood and the school district for helping with a bunch of initiatives that have been going on lately. So, one, the hike and bike week at the end of September, I think, went really well considering that the weather decided to get a little grumpy on us at that point in time, but it was still really great to see all the families that went out and walked, rode their bikes, and chose to get to school outside of a car. So, thank you to you all for continuing to share that with the residents and communicate that on social media, et cetera. I also appreciate seeing all the yard signs encouraging active transportation and slowing down because we've got our littlest community members out getting to school. So, also, the Pedestrian Safety Month. I saw there was a few things being shared on social media with that, so thank you for continuing to bring awareness on how to ensure that people get through our city safely regardless of how they choose to do so or need to do so. And it was really cool to also see the painted curb bump outs by the Hays students just a couple days ago. So, that art initiative is really helping to get the kids involved, but also to continue to establish, you know, how we can build awareness for people traveling through the city in different ways. So, along those lines, I do appreciate all of you that have agreed to and expressed interest in wanting to participate in the Bike with a Mayor event tomorrow, but unfortunately, the weather seems to not want to be on board with that plan for that tomorrow evening as well. So, just in the last couple hours, I spoke with the other Bike Lakewood board members, and we've decided, because it looks like there could be storms and could be heavy rains, and you look at one site and it says 30% chance of rain, another site says 80% chance of rain, we've decided that we're going to postpone it. We want it to be a fun, enjoyable event where community members can get together with you all, all of our city officials, leaders, staff who want to participate in that. So we're hoping to be able to reschedule that. We'll be in contact with your office, Mayor George, and see if we can get another date on the books, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to share that with you all. Although we are bummed to postpone it, I think it's in the best interest for everybody to stay safe and make sure that it's a positive event when we do have the chance to have it. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Yeah, Bike with a Mayor, Not with Lightning. All right, so that's, all right, so, thank you.
I think I know my rights, but I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so that's everybody I've signed in to speak, and that's about everybody that's left here, just almost, so. All right, so any announcements from council members? Councilmember Strebig.
Thank you. For the Cleveland Stonewall Democrats, I created a queer, a queer calendar that I put at your chairs today, and I just wanted to point out a couple upcoming events before our next meeting. October is LGBTQ History Month. Tomorrow night is a full moon. The 8th is International Lesbian Day. The 11th is National Coming Out Day. October 13th is Indigenous Peoples' Day. The 15th is International Pro Down Day, and the 16th is Spirit Day, which is an annual LGBTQ Awareness Day. It was created by a young woman in Canada in response to a rash of widely-publicized bullying-related suicides of queer students, so recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Baker.
Yes, I'd just like to remind everyone, the traveling public, that I-90 is going to be under construction for a lot of years, and I've seen some very frustrated drivers on a serious level, and thank you, chief. I've seen more patrols up there. We need more still. I was waiting at that light on Riverside, turned left on McKinley, and someone got so upset, he went to the right, through the intersection, and back around to get around, and this is during rush hour when kids are riding bikes. So if you are in the area, slow down. Being late to that meeting is not worth taking someone's life for getting in a serious accident. There's been a couple on I-90 that's really backed up things. This is about safety, and it's going to be going on for the next two or three years, so we all should just get used to it. So, thank you.
Always a good point. Better to be late for a meeting than to be the late departed, so. All right, any, Councilman Evans?
Just one more shout-out for Spooky Push for Aid, noon, Madison Park. Always a fun event.
All right, any other announcements? Announcements from the administration? I got, sorry, time is up. Thank God. All right, so, with that, no further business to come before council. Without objection, we are adjourned.